Thank you for joining me today. This is a meeting of the Maintenance and Development Subcommittee of the Springfield City Council. This meeting is an update on capital projects to see where we are. Of course, I always like to know how my favorite project, the Campanneal, is doing. So we're joined by city councilors, Jesse Letterman, a member of the committee, Vice President of the Council, Tracy Redfield, Tim Allen, Chair of the Elder Committee, who did a wonderful event for St. Patrick's Day, Peter Garvey, our CFO, TJ Plant, and Lindsay Hackett. So I think the best way to start off this meeting perhaps is with you, TJ, to let us know where we are, what's on the agenda, what's been accomplished, what we can look forward to, and what we can share with our fellow councilors. Okay, I think TJ left the meeting?
I'm here, I'm back. Sorry, I said to grab something.
Oh, okay. Like me, with technical difficulties.
Just grabbing the capital plan that we released yesterday, so.
Okay.
So, right, yesterday we released our capital plan that is required by city ordinance and state statutes that were released, a multi-year financial plan and a capital plan by March 30th. That was sent out to the council and posted on our website yesterday. There isn't anything majorly new, given the fact that the projects that we have are mostly ongoing. You know, probably the recent completed project would be the dispatch center. For those that aren't aware, we finally consolidated civilian dispatch over at Roosevelt Avenue. The cost of approximately a million dollars. That has us fully integrated with the police and fire dispatch centers. So that's kind of a big, about 14 years or so in the making. So I don't know if there's particular projects you want to go over, or you want me to go over the capital plan itself, or if you want to.
Yeah, I'd like to see in what order the, and I'm sure from my colleagues have questions too, but I'd like to see in what order some of these projects are. What's up next? What's further down the road?
So the big one that we're completing, as you know, is Brightwood and Lincoln. DeBerry and Homer is next up on the plan, and Pete can talk about that, the feasibility study. We're doing a full upgrade of our computer-aided dispatcher, CAD system, and record management system at the police department. Right now, they're on two different systems. Those are kind of the big ones that we're, that are ongoing. We do, we have, we do not plan on issuing debt at the moment as it relates to any new major projects because we have about $50 million worth of debt we can issue every year, every two years, excuse me. So the other one that are kind of in the hop, in the pipeline is we just spent $4 million on Court Square redevelopment and remediation, so we can turn it over to the preferred developer, Opal. We're looking to do some, hoping to do something beyond the road, the Chapter 90 roads money that we have appropriated every year, about 3.6 million. We, as you've seen, Watershops Pond has been drained. We're doing the dam fixes there, and we're going to try to do cleanup when the time is right for that. But those are the big main ones that we are working on as we speak. I don't know, Pete, if there's any other ones? Golf course, million dollars of the golf courses to do the, redo the drainage and the sand traps and do some digging up of the ponds there that allow us for irrigation. So those are kind of the big things that we have going on. Pete, I don't know if there's any, if I missed any major ones?
Oh, I can go through some dates. We're going to be opening up Brightwood, Lincoln in the next year for August, school. So that's a $90 million project that's going to be coming up the, we're going to be in closeout probably for about a year. We're starting DeBerry Homer beginning of June. We're going out to bid for early packages next month. The rest of the packages will be available sometime at the end of May, the early June for file sub bids and the rest of the packages. So we're going right along with that. So DeBerry Park should be completed mid-June. I was out there yesterday. Tim and I have been talking about the dam project, the Watershops Pond. Along with that is the draining of the pond, cleaning up the pond. That should be going out to bid mid-May, with the construction beginning in June and finishing up in the winter months. There'll be a little bit of punch list next spring so we can fill the pond. Along with that is the NDRC grant, which is, this is all funded with his solar upgrades, or actually our first solar project, I believe, in this, for the city of Springfield at Brookings School. So we're going right along there. We have some, this summer, we have boiler projects at Indian Orchard, Frederick Harris, and Sumner Avenue School. So we're upgrading the boilers there. Next, coming up for the summer of 2022, we have changing the windows and doors at the SciTech project. And we have many park projects that are in the pipeline, ready to come online.
I see, Councilor Whitfield, you have your hand up. You have a question?
I'm sorry, I have, I don't know if we're to the point, but I have a question.
I think there's some technical difficulty here. Can you give your question again?
The new DeBerry Park? I don't have time to ask about particular projects, but I'm looking for an update on the new DeBerry Park and the bathrooms.
The new DeBerry Park will be completed in mid-June. I think the park department is going for CPA grant for the bathrooms.
Okay, thank you very much.
TJ, what about projects that have, on the capital plan that have been there for a while? That are, that you have been able to get to? Like the Campanneal.
Also, the Campanneal is definitely one that, I mean, that's 23 to 26 million dollars. My hope was that the CPA would do hapsies with us and allow us to pay for half of it over 20 years, and we pay for half of it. The way the CPA is set up, they do not do more than 250,000. My, I would like to have a conversation with Bob McCarrill about whether or not they would take half the debt service if we did a 20-year bond and use some dedicated resources to pay that bond the way it was campaigned upon when that was passed, and I haven't had much traction on that front.
Well, maybe we can have a meeting on it and see if we can, we can get it moving. Counselor Allen, you have a question?
I have a few questions, but I didn't want to dominate or anything with the, shall I just start on one of them?
Go ahead.
Okay, thanks. Pete, on Watershops Pond, by the way, are we calling it Watershops Pond or Lake Massasoit? Do we have a decision on that? Doesn't matter?
I'm not the deciding factor on that.
I, not, I didn't ask anybody personally. I just like, anyway, I have convened a citizens group.
Yep.
We've met three times. We're meeting every two weeks. Our next meeting is next Tuesday. And, and they're pretty good, you know, they're doing a plan and all this other stuff. And, but some of the things that have come up, you know, TJ, you had said at some point there wasn't money for cleanup, but you would pursue it as the year went on or something. Is that part of this, of a clean, like actual money for a cleanup weekend or something with? But now I understand Pat Sullivan is doing an assessment of the lake bed and, you know, might need some consultants and a drone and all this sort of stuff. So could you just lay out, like, this group of people is pretty mature. They're not, you know, pushing too bad on it, but we were going to try to do a cleanup in the spring, and then Pat said it's not doable because we have, we have so many issues with the lake bed that we have to figure out. Let's aim for August or September, which is fine. But where, what money is going to be available for beyond the dam repair, but for the lake itself? And some other things have come up along the lines of working with other communities about their use of fertilizer and things like that, the whole, the whole watershed and the stuff that ends up, you know, we're going to do, we're going to clean it a year ago, a year from now, we'll put water back in it. And then if it gets weedy and all that stuff, are there things we could be doing now that would help us to? And so that, that issue has come up. So it's two parts. Is there cleanup money just for the cleanup? What will that run? 50 grand, 100 grand? I don't know. Is there money for Pat to do his assessment? And then is there money that, is there anything to, to being able to talk to other communities? I know stuff has been done in the past that I'm not really that aware of. So there's two or three parts to that question, so.
So I definitely want to make sure Pat has money to do the assessment to, to get it right. This is a once in a whatever, 28 years or so that we drain it and have a chance to clean it. So once we know what that number looks like, it's easier to find funding to do the cleanup. I would argue that while it's drained and while we have the opportunity, we should take advantage of it. But until I know what that number looks like, it's harder to say definitively where the money would come from.
And as far as weed control goes, we worked with the, every regulatory body in the state of Massachusetts to get that drained. And the strategy around the weed control is to let it go over a winter. And it was fortunate enough that we were able to keep it down for two winters. So it should alleviate a lot of the overgrowth. That was some of the strategy is when it gets to the freezing weather, it will die.
So we're through one winter, and you're, you're counting next winter as a second winter with that?
Correct. So it should really help with the vegetation in the waterway.
Is there any work that's been done with, you know, Wilbraham and other communities to, to try to bring them under the tent to have policies that don't increase weed production and all that? I know that, I, I can talk offline about that. That's not for this meeting, but, but that's one of the things that has come up. So, so TJ, let me just repeat what you, that, I see three pieces to this. And I, not, not counting the dam. The dam is, I'm not involved with the dam part, so the financing of that, you know, it's you guys and Tina and, and all that, and Pete. But Pat needs money for the assessment of the lake bed, which he said he'd have done around June 1st. You know, where the rivulets are and where the underground streams are and that stuff. And then a second bunch of money would be, once we can get out on the lake, once he's done that, is the cleanup itself. And the third part is, you know, whatever we try to convince other communities to do. So you're saying that you need Pat's to do his assessment, and then you'll be able to tell me more, TJ, at that point?
Correct. So the assessment will tell us kind of what needs to be done, and then he'll give us an estimate on what needs to be cleaned up, and then how we would go about that and the cost of that. And depending on that is, we would find funding based upon what that looks like.
Okay. That, that's all I need on that right now, but I, I do see this thing has incredible potential as a community-wide project. I got 10 or 12 people on the committee. I've got a couple of Springfield College people on. They've committed to a cleanup. Mary Beth Cooper has committed to a cleanup with, with Springfield College being involved. You know, early in September when the kids come back. You get the point. We've got a little momentum and not trying to push you like for something soon. We don't need anything soon. We'll just wait for Pat's assessment. But people are working on it and, you know, and hopeful about really improving it. That's all.
So what is the status of Lake Massasoit now? It's, it's, it's not usable for anything, is it? Could you answer that? What this, what the status is now before these assessments and cleanup?
It's drained, so there's no recreational activity there. The habitat has gone into hibernation.
Oh dear.
Yeah, so they, we do, that's all part of the fishing wildlife. So they, obviously, they won't be stocking it for this spring. But we have a robust, when we put it back to, back online, we're going to have a robust stocking of the, the pond or lake.
Or project.
So that's a good thing because it, it does get a lot of use from the community as far as fishing. And fishing wildlife was really excited about restocking that and getting it back online.
Not something we need to talk about here, but I am getting complaints from neighbors who live by the pond, by Cathedral, by Pope Francis. The geese, the geese are everywhere. They, they lost their, their place where they hang out, so there are some complaints about. But I, I know it's not, probably nothing we can do about that, but.
I can let Pat know because he has Adam that does a lot of his geese work, so.
All right, I will. Thank you.
Okay. And I, I'm sorry, I didn't call on my colleague on the committee, member of the committee, Counselor Letterman. You have some questions?
Madam Chair, can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Great, thank you so much and no worries. I have one, one logistical question and, and then a question on a project. So TJ, can, can you help me, help me understand the significance of the capital plan? Because I know there's some projects on the capital plan, obviously, that are sort of moving fairly quickly, others that have been there for some time. So the, the significance of placing an item on the capital plan, what does that actually do for the project?
So it gets it on the radar for us to be, consider how and when to fund it or grants or other funding sources to go after. And it's based upon a rubric on public safety, public health, financial resources, economic development, resiliency. And it scores a number and it goes from an A, B, C, or D category. And as we cross stuff off the list or as like funding comes available, you know, we move stuff up in the queue. Or it just becomes something that makes sense for the community to do, we move it up in the queue. I use the golf courses, for example. That has been on the radar for a long time to fix the drainage at the golf courses. We never really had the resources to do it. It was, wasn't really a super high priority. But when COVID hit and everyone else could only golf and do some others, but slight recreation, the golf courses started making way more money than they ever have. And so that became the time is right to reallocate funding to do the golf courses. Everything else just kind of moves up slowly. Like I use the Campanneal because Counselor Walsh talks about it all the time. That's been on the category B for quite a while because it's a very expensive project.
Right.
And until we get federal funding or state funding or historic funding or CPA funding, it's a very tough thing to do. I mean, I talk to the mayor about it all the time. Put a $25 million into the clock tower is great, but $25 million into other projects or priorities, you know, tend to be better. And that's why I kind of say.
I understand.
So that's how it works generally, and then things get bumped up. And sometimes, and I'll use Turf Field at Central. That was on there. We've been talking about it for a while. And then the Calverton Senior Foundation came through and said, hey, we want to fund it, and then we were able to come up with our portion of it.
Sure. So, um, next question, is streetlight acquisition and LED conversion anywhere in the capital plan right now?
I don't know if I've actually seen the streetlight acquisition piece. It is very high on my radar of things that I, we've been looking at and things that I've, I've met on it probably a dozen times in the last five years with different folks that have ideas of how to do it. I, Lindsay, do you know if you've seen it? I don't think I've seen that directly on the capital plan.
No, it's not. It would be under DPW, and I don't, I don't think Chris has added that on there.
Yeah, but I.
So here's my, here's my thoughts. So here's my thoughts. So as you know, the, the streetlights are a pet peeve of mine. You know, for a couple of reasons, we are behind where other cities of our size in Massachusetts are, and some of those are logistical. I certainly recognize that. But the reason I bring it up now is I think that there might be an opportunity in the next couple of years to see some funding become available at the state and federal level because actually of the increased focus on climate action that's coming out of both the state and federal government. And this is, you know, a really easy way that we can drastically reduce energy consumption of our streetlights, but also has the added, you know, faction or added factor of improving lighting and reliability. We've done some really good work in the city in the last three years in sort of transitioning how we report those lights to ever source and get them fixed, and they have stepped their game up in terms of fixing streetlights. But, you know, we're sort of putting a Band-Aid on the, on the situation, and I think that I'd love to see it on our radar so that as that funding, as those funding sources become available, we're maybe a little bit more prepped to jump on it in the event that we can make it work.
Yeah, I have no problem adding it to the capital plan in the DPW category. I think we have a pretty solid estimate of what it would cost to acquire our streetlights. Again, I've met on it numerous times. I think there's a lot of smart technologies out there, things that we can deploy. So I have no problem having Lindsay and Melanie add it to the capital plan.
I think that's great. I totally agree. I think, I think we just need the right, I totally agree. I think we need just the right sort of perfect storm, if you will, of sort of resources to come together. And I think that those might in the near future. So I'd love to just make sure that it's on the radar so that we can jump on it at the appropriate time.
Sounds good.
So TJ, do you still have a list of all the projects? I mean, how many projects are on the capital plan? You used to have, I remember seeing at presentations, you used to have the list. The A-list and the B-list, correct?
Yeah, A through D, and we have 455 projects on the list, total of 765 million. Priority A is 170.9 million. Priority B is 318 million. Priority C is 226 million, and Priority D is roughly 50 million.
455 projects to be done?
To, that, that we're tracking that needs to get done at some point.
And, and they're prioritized by department?
Department and need and priority based upon the rubric that we have.
Wow. So, and now like the idea that Counselor Letterman had, if he wants something added to the capital plan, can that come from members of the council also?
Well, typically it comes through the department head. The requisite department head who will come in and say, hey, here's the need that we've identified, so we'd have to go through the department head. The one that Counselor Letterman just put on the table has been something that has been met and discussed ad nauseam with probably 15 different consultants that can do it for us. You know, so, but if there are projects, let us know. We'll see if it's on, and we'll talk to the department, their appropriate department head about getting it on.
So it, there, is there a capital asset committee and you meet regularly on these 455 projects?
There is a committee that we meet, we meet on, and there is a council representative on it, which used to be Tim Allen. I'm not sure if Tim is still it or catering with your role as Maintenance Development. You de facto are the appoint person on it, but we do have a committee that meets it to review it.
And how often do they meet?
At least once a year, sometimes a few times a year, depending on if money's available and projects that are coming up. We probably should be more frequent than we do. But most of us are in constant contact, so it's, so we don't meet formally as often as we probably should.
Okay, well, I'll, I'll check with the council presidency, what status is. Yeah. Counselor Allen, do you still have your hand up?
Oh, I didn't mean, I don't mean to, but I can, I can reply to that. I was the rep the last couple of years. Marcus did not ask me to do it this year and, and, you know, but I did go to that meeting the last couple of years and meet with the department heads, et cetera. Yeah, why don't you check with Marcus? Catering, it makes sense for you to be that.
TJ, have you met already this year or?
Yeah, so we met, oh, you know, when we met Lindsay? I can't remember, or Melanie?
About two weeks ago.
Oh, okay. All right. So you won't have another meeting for a year?
Uh, depends. Right, right now we released our capital plan. We're going into budget season. I talked to Pete Bowles daily, if not daily, but all, all his ongoing projects and everything. You know, so what I, what I actually want to do at some point is come to the city council or the council of the whole and have a full-on presentation of the capital plan, plus have a dialogue that Counselor Letterman talked about yesterday about the coming, incoming, or pending, rather, infrastructure legislation that's coming out of the White House and Congress. Because I think this is a perfect time to start crossing stuff off our list of projects that we've been eyeing for a number of years and not had resources to do.
I think that's a very good idea, and I'm sure the three of us can help facilitate with that. But what I'm, I'm hoping for when I give my report to the, to the whole committee next week is could you list the top 25 projects on the capital plan, or do you have that somewhere already?
No, we have it, and it's actually in the capital plan that we have, I sent, was sent out yesterday to the council.
Yeah.
All the projects.
Okay, just to simplify it. And, and Pete, can you give us an update on, on the school projects? That just I can present to the council?
Sure, we're coming online in August for Brightwood, Lincoln, furniture is being delivered the end of June. We're moving the teachers over in the month of July, and we're hoping, we will be open for August 23rd when the students come back.
Oh, that's pretty exciting.
And then June 15th or mid, the beginning of June, we'll be starting DeBerry Homer Street School, which is about a $93 million project.
Which is so overdue. I mean, how old are those schools? Over 100 years old, right?
Yeah.
I, I, I still remember how awful the, the, when I, we took the tour a long time ago of, of Homer, how awful the bathrooms were. You know, it was like medieval times, so I'm glad that that's finally going to be addressed.
One other ask, Counselor Walsh, if I may, if we can get the money for the Campanneal, I think we probably should do it sooner than later because I can still make it to the top, and I really.
Well, I'm not going to join you because I, I don't like heights, but, you know, you can wave to me on the bottom there, so. And we, we're joined also by Lindsay Hackett, who's been keeping us informed on Zoom. Lindsay, did you want to add anything to what's going on with the capital plans?
Um, no, I think, you know, TJ added everything that needed to be added. And what, I know Counselor Walsh, we've always met, and Counselor Allen, to discuss the capital plan. So we're ready to meet and give a presentation whenever you guys would like us to.
Yeah, just a matter of timing and setting it up. How about you, Melanie? Would you like to add anything?
No, thank you though.
Okay.
She's a leader of her own, that she's learning as, as we goes.
I definitely want to acknowledge all the women.
Yes.
For their contributions.
Congratulations to them. They've earned every good.
Absolutely. So TJ, would you say you're optimistic at this point in time? Or is there something else out there that we should be worried about?
No, I honestly, given the fact that we're coming out of a pandemic relatively soon, we are in as strong financial footing as we can be as far as it goes to the pandemic, to the general fund, to the operating budget, to everything else that's going on. I feel pretty confident that we're in a place for a continuing, I reckon, to restart or jumpstart our renaissance that we had hit pause with the pandemic.
Good. And, and Pete, how do you feel about that? You're optimistic, but you can see your progress because we can all see the schools going up.
Yeah, and hopefully prices stabilize, stabilize during this pandemic. It's not only very costly to get construction materials, but the lead times are ridiculous. Lumber prices just in the last three weeks. Lumber prices just in the last three weeks went up forty-seven percent.
Whoa.
So they were six, this doesn't mean a, a six hundred and thirty-six dollars a thousand feet. And now it's over right around a thousand dollars, oh, thousand square feet for board feet.
Wow.
Copper's way up there and steel's way up there. So it's just.
Guess we all best get moving then. Well, this has been a very informative meeting and I will pass on some of the information in my committee report. But I, I think obviously, committee of the whole meeting will be much appreciated by our colleagues, so.
Yeah, we'd like to get priorities in the council too, to at least make sure they're in there. If not, we'll get them in there.
Well, does, is there anything in there for sidewalks?
There's money, yes, there's always money for demolition sidewalks and roads. The question is, can we afford to bond for it above the chapter ninety money we get? And right now, the Homer DeBerry School is crowding out all the funding we have available for the next two years or so. Because the way MSBA's reimbursement formula works, it's not eighty-twenty like they say it is. It's eighty-twenty of eligible costs. So all the extra costs that we incur are all borne by the city. So we haven't had a chance to get beyond. Now, having said that, we also have access to infrastructure money that's going to be coming down the pike. The American Relief Plan money that's coming down the pike. So there may be ways to address other needs of the city that are in the capital plan. But roads and sidewalks are definitely in there.
Well, you know, Forest Park never seems to be the beneficiary of any of that funding. And, and I do get a lot of complaints, you probably do too. Yeah, so what happens when you don't, you don't fit into the, the, the category for funding? So what does that leave everybody?
Yeah, that's the problem is, I mean, I'd probably say there's ten millions worth of need of sidewalks and we don't have the funding to do that. And when we do have funding, we do like four to five hundred and it's a small drop in the bucket. So it is going to be a constant struggle and challenge to get to make any meaningful impact on sidewalks.
Right, and there's people who tell me they've been on list for fifteen or twenty years. So anyhow, well, this has been a great meeting. I appreciate you guys joining me and giving me this information. And if nobody else has a question, I think we're all set.
All right, anytime you guys need information, just send me a note or you call me.
Thank you, everybody.
All right, thank you.
All right. Thanks.
Thank you. Great meeting, Counselor Walsh. Thank you.